Good evening, everyone. It is 7 o'clock and I am going to call this meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Cheryl. Will you do the roll call?
Yes.
Here.
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 Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. I am looking for approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay. All right. I have a motion by Councilwoman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. Are any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
We accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Items 1, 2...
1, 2, 3, I guess.
Second.
Who's seconded? Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Denly and seconded by Councilwoman Couch. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have a presentation tonight and we're going to jump right into that. Well, first we'll do the special recognition. So, if I could have Jeff Moody come forward.
So, I think we're a mere city in that we have many, many employees and stay for several years, and they're tired here. And Jeff is one of them. So, we have tonight a recognition. It is 30 years that he has been in Cedar Woolley. So, for the 30 years of distinguished service to the City of Cedar Woolley and Pollicore's Department, beginning on January 1st, 1989, the City of Cedar Woolley community has been fortunate to have the services of a dedicated girl employee at the Union Cemetery, and Jeff, and we just have to thank him. And I've found jobs where I was still there. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I'm looking for 30 years. Is that what you're going to be doing?
Okay. I had a number 30 when I was young. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, yes.
So, Jeff, before you go, Councilwoman Kinzer would like to say something?
Jeff, I'd like to say thank you for everything you're doing up at Northern State Hospital Cemetery as well. It's making a tremendous difference in the way it looks up there now and making our job as volunteers easier too. Yeah, definitely. Too wet now, but yeah. But, thank you. It's made a big difference already.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a special presentation tonight. Kelsey Taylor of the Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group is going to be sharing what's going on at White Riverfront Park. Hi, Kelsey. Thank you for coming.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me tonight and thanks especially to Councilwoman Birdy Young and Mayor Johnson for inviting me. I'm sorry that my back has turned to some of you. Hopefully, I'll still be able to see everything. So, again, my name is Kelsey. I am the Riparian Restoration Coordinator with Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group and I want to give you a little bit of an update about the project that we're doing at Riverfront Park. So, a little bit about Skagit Fisheries. Some of you may be really familiar with us. Some of you might not have heard of us before. We are your regional fisheries enhancement group for the area. So, we cover the Skagit River, the Samish River, and the Sauk River and all the tributaries that flow into those. And we are really interested in getting volunteer and community involvement in our projects, which is why I'm really excited to give you a quick overview about the project that we have going on right now, the Riverfront Park. So, we started work on this in 2018. It's directly next to the Bark Park and right across from the RV Park, kind of over in the Riverfront complex of the road. And it is funded by the Department of Ecology. We have a clean water grate with them. And then, it's also funded by a private organization called the Rose Foundation. And they're kind of a grassroots organization that wants members of the community to really be, you know, involved in their own projects. I wanted to bring just a couple of before and after photos, just to see what it used to look like versus what it looks like now. We still have some more site preparation to do before we're ready to plant it, but I wanted to give you an idea. So, we have some very tall blackberry that used to be out there and now, yeah, quite a bit of a difference. Blackberries really cut back and we're going to spend one more season getting the site prepped and ready. And then, we're interested in planting out seven acres on this site to do water quality improvements. And that specifically means planting native species. So, we've got another one. And this is after Nathan and his crew have already been out to cut a little bit of a blackberry, but you can see how tall it used to be. And we've really, in a short amount of time, made a lot of improvements to the site. This is my little drawing of what the trail could look like. So, the next steps for this project are doing a small trail building project, kind of creating a bit of a horseshoe from where the trail currently is to make it connect all the way back to the road, so that it's usable for people who want to walk their dogs. It's right next to the Bark Park and to be used as recreation. We also really love to include this project on Make a Difference Day. We love to do our work in local parks because that's what Make a Difference Day is all about, is getting community members reinvested and involved in the parks in their community. And with that, we have a couple of signs that are going to be going in, interpretive signs, that are going to explain a little bit about native species. They're going to be explaining the importance of salmon to the Skagit River. And there's also going to be one specifically talking about the history of Cedar Woolley. So, I wanted to put them by you tonight and I'd be happy to follow up with kind of clear images of them if you'd be interested in kind of taking a look at your own time to give me some feedback, because we really want Cedar Woolley to, as much as possible, be involved and invested in this project. So, we've got one for Riparian Zone and the importance of the Riparian Zone for water quality and for salmon. We've got one about the town of Cedar Woolley and these pictures were provided by the Historical Museum for Skagit County. And then, of course, we have to have one about salmon because we're the Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group for salmon. So, yeah, I would, again, and this doesn't really give you an opportunity to take a long time to look at it, to give feedback. So, again, I'd be really happy to follow up with an email with those signs so that you can take a closer look. All right. Well, that's it. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to get you up to speed on what's going on at Riverfront Park. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and email me and I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. Thank you.
Kelsey, now, the pictures that you were showing just a minute ago, back a slide, no, one more, yeah, on these various plants and things, is this something you're saying you're going to put up as signage along the trail?
That's correct. Yeah, we'll have those three interpretive signs along the trail that we're planning on putting.
Not those necessarily.
Can you say that again, please?
Not those necessarily.
Oh, these in particular, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is what the signs are going to look like unless you had some questions.
So, what do you have pictured there? Because it's really difficult to...
Yeah, I understand. The pictures that we have are much higher quality. These are kind of like my quick copy and paste, you know, from the PDF.
So, Kelsey, is there a possibility that, before you check out, check with Aaron Bergen? If you mail him the slideshow, he'll mail it out to the rest of us?
That's a great idea.
And then, we can email you if we have any questions. Will that work?
That would be perfect.
Any further questions? I want to open it up to the council in case they have other questions right now, but would that work?
Yeah, that would be fine. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any more questions? Yes.
Hi. Kelsey, thanks so much. Really enjoyed our cup of coffee going over all this because this is right in Ward 6 and I feel this is a direct connection of why Cedar, the City of Cedar Woolley is connected with the Skagit Watership Council. And I'm really impressed with how we're taking out that Class 2 noxious weed, Himalayan blackberries, and replacing them with native plants. And it's going to just be a great place for families to go and just use that area, which is a great recreational site in the city. And then, to also be very educational about what should be there and what will be there with those plants. I was wondering if you had a, just a moment to educate us on what a riparian area is?
Sure. Riparian area is the area directly next to the stream and that's where the vegetation grows. That riparian area is more important than any other for salmon. It's directly providing shade to the water. It's providing, over time, large woody debris, which creates in-channel habitat for the salmon to use and especially for juveniles. It gives them a place to hide and rest. And then, it's providing a lot of other benefits that people don't think about. It's providing nutrient runoff retention. So, any pollutants that are coming from the roadsides, that are coming from agricultural areas, it's picking a lot of those up before they even get into the water. And this particular tributary flows directly into the Skagit River. So, the benefits there are really great.
So, those, sorry, those trees will help shade the water then for the fish? Those are the trees that we planted at the farm over in Cedar Woolley, over by the Humane Society there, the old Humane Society.
That's correct. We will very likely be using some of those same trees that we potted up this year at the site, rooted in the fall and then in the following spring as well. Thank you for bringing that up. It was a joy to have you up.
So, along those lines, volunteering. So, you mentioned both Make a Difference Day and then also you said, "We are doing this, we are doing that." Are those members of your group or are they volunteers who can be involved or how does that work?
So, we have not set a date for a trail building. We're thinking sometime either in September, early October, and we will definitely be putting out the word when those dates are finalized and that information becomes available. We'll be blasting it out. And we are looking for volunteers from the community. We've identified a couple of organizations that are particularly interested in working with us, like the Wildcat Steelhead Club. But, that doesn't mean that we, you know, don't want other people to come. It's really an opportunity for the community to join us. And especially on Make a Difference Day, we're really looking for volunteers, for people who think that they would actually use the park and enjoy the park.
Yes, Carl?
Yeah, so, once that's complete, or what other ideas do you have in the City of Cedar Woolley that projects that might be coming down the pike for us?
That's a great question. We have talked to the president of the Wildcat Steelhead Club about doing potentially a small restoration project on their tributary that feeds into the Skagit River. We're also talking with Nathan from the Parks Department on a couple of other potential projects, especially putting up some more interpretive signs at some of the parks.
Thank you again, Kelsey. That was very informative and it's exciting to see this happening.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, we will move on to 36, page 36 in your packet, and that is the Home Trust of Skagit Community Development Block Grant. So, I think both Mr. Bergen and Mr. Merriman are going to talk about this?
What about the staff reports?
Oh, really? You think we should do that?
Optional. Totally optional.
All right. I'm jumping ahead. Wow, well, I see we have Ms. McElwath here. Do you have anything to report? We're going to move on to Lieutenant McElwath. Do you have anything to report?
I think you got it on the spot there. Are you sure? No? So, Police Department's kind of got a little injury bug going on right now, but we'll heal her up and be back and ready. During that process, I'm also working hard to fill a spot that we have vacated right now, looking at both entry or lateral options for that. And I'll look to try to fill that as soon as I can. And then, just a reminder, Drug Take Back Day is a Saturday from 10 to 2. UG, United General Hospital parking lot. Bring back any of your expired prescriptions and get rid of them. Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that they can do that here anytime though, correct?
Yes, they can do that anytime, Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30.
All right. Thank you.
And starting this week, we now have envelopes. So, if you want to take an envelope home, you can put the prescriptions in the envelope and drop it in the mail service. So, there's lots of ways to do it now.
Convenient. Yes, you mean?
Oh, sorry. I just had a question about that. It just popped in my head just now. It might be a silly question, but is it just, it doesn't matter what prescriptions? Like, can it be animal prescriptions too?
I don't think it matters. No, just whatever is expired medications, we'll take care of that.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak about Cedar Woolley Rise. As your board member of that, and we saw some great media in the paper about it. What is the goal, shall we say, in volume or weight that we're looking to take back on Saturday?
Limit is unknown. We can take whatever we get. We're looking for, I don't remember what we set a goal for, but...
100 pounds.
100 pounds? We'll see if that happens. That's a lot. We'll take whatever we get. We can exceed that, no matter. Whatever we take is going to help kids from having access to the hats in the houses and such. So, we just want, anything laying around, bring to us. We will get it boxed up and send it away for disposal.
I guess, just one follow-up on that. Can you talk about the privacy if someone brings in a prescription bottle? What happens to that?
All that happens is you're going to bring it in and you're going to put it into a bag and it gets dumped into a box. So, basically, police is just there to take the items away and send them off to be disposed of. So, it's totally anonymous.
Wasn't there something about removing names from labels or something?
We're going to have them do that by themselves. So, that's up to them. So, we won't know anything about names or anything.
All right. Assistant Chief Wagner?
Well, we currently have three recruits in the EMT class over at the Skagit Valley College that is funded by our EMS levy. So, we're waiting for them to go through that. They'll be done around June and be able to take their national registry. They're working hard. We also have our Training Hub that is also funded by the EMS Council and they've been diligently teaching CPR, first aid, over here at the High School and State Street Education Center to get all of our graduates or seniors up and ready for their requirements to have CPR first aid before they graduate. The CERT Academy is currently going on also on Thursday evenings here in the training room at the Fire Department. They're getting close to their halfway point. They had live fire extinguisher training and stuff here the week before, out here in the monsoon out back. And other than that, call volume is continuing to rise. The guys and gals are working hard, going all over the county and taking care of business. All of our new firefighter medics are through their proficiency training with their firefighter one stuff and are ongoing with their probationary period and doing an amazing job for us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Good evening, everybody. So, it's been a busy couple of weeks preparing for interviews to replace Joanne, who's going to be retiring after 30 years with the city. So, that's what we've been working a lot on this week. Also, legislature is finishing up on some of their work this session. Well, maybe we'll see if the session continues or not. But, I'm asking at the request of the Planning Committee Chair, Councilman DeYoung, to add a Planning Committee meeting on May 8th. So, I wanted to run those dates by those on the Planning Committee to see if we want to meet probably 6 o'clock ahead of time and talk about particularly the impacts, if any, of House Bill 1923, which is the, which is the density bill. And we're still waiting to see if anything's going to happen with 5812, which is the accessory dwelling unit bill, and then discuss some strategy for future in case other bills like that come next year. So, we'll put that on the May 8th calendar. I'll get out some notice to the mayor and the council members, Aaron, sometime this week, hopefully. And then, a couple of items going on from the Planning Department. Wanted to, wanted to ask the council for one reads, single reads, on future final plat approvals. That's, so when a plat is done, we go for two reads for the preliminary plat at the council and that approves what the plat's going to look like in practice. And then, we, the applicant goes out and hires the engineer and designs it and builds it. And then, the final plat is the council just saying, "Okay, everything's been built out on the site. Everything that staff has asked for is complete. Yes, we're checking it off. It looks like what we had approved in the preliminary plat and we trust that staff has checked all their boxes to make sure everything's there." So, it's really just accepting the final project. So, in order to save time for the applicant who is, you know, at that very last step and as soon as they get council approval on a final plat, they can go record it and they'll have lots and they can submit building permits the next day on their behalf. I was hoping the council would be willing to do one reads on those in the future, so can extend the process for the applicant in the final steps of a project. So, I don't know if I just need to nod heads or, you know...
Any questions regarding that? Any concerns?
Not at all.
So, all right.
My concern there would be that if all the council's not present, then that could be passing something without everyone really being, you know, fully informed. And that kind of helps when we have a second read. I do understand that if we do have a full council and we can go ahead, I don't have a problem with trying to move those through as quickly as possible, but I think that we need to be, at least have that still as an option to have a second read.
All right. So, we all need to show up?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I guess my other comment would be that we're just kind of the last failsafe for late information if something were to happen. So, I would agree that a one read is, sounds fine with the understanding that the council still has parliamentary procedure to table it if they have new information that's urgent or critical that needs to be considered that you may not have had presented at the department.
And then, I would also ask that it be on the consent agenda. So, you have time to review it. You can always take it off the consent agenda.
Right. You can pull it at that point if you want to. Yeah? So, why don't we do that? We will agree to do it if everybody's here, but if not, then the council has the right to pull it from the consent agenda. Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess we should probably officially do that. I don't know if it'd be an ordinance or a resolution or anything, but parliamentary...
I don't think we need to do that.
I hope not. I hope not.
Madam Mayor, my sense is that it was without objection.
Right. Yeah.
All right. And then, at your next meeting, you're going to be bringing forward to you a public hearing. And this is really actually a housekeeping issue. Back in 2012, the council approved an ordinance that allows for the deferral of impact fees of single-family homes until the time that the house is sold and then the impact fees are paid by the applicant. Instead of, the other option is to just pay when you build a, when you pick up your building permit and you go and start to build the house. There's the state, more or less required, but we're already doing it, that each city allow for deferred impact fees. And they're studying who, which cities do allow that and which don't. And they asked us if we allow school impact fees and I said, "Yes, it's in our ordinance. There you go." And it could be a little clearer in our ordinance that school impact fees may be deferred. It says it quite clearly in the ordinance, the language of the ordinance, and, you know, the council knew that they're approving deferral of school impact fees, but it's just not super clear in the language of the code. So, we're proposing a housekeeping amendment to chapter, I think it's 1546. Can't remember. Just to, just to make it super clear. So, again, on that, since it's a housekeeping, I'm requesting a one read because it's already in practice, something that we do. We're just clarifying in our code. We do have to have a public hearing because technically it's a change of code. So, we'll schedule a public hearing and then request for a one read on that change. You can count this as your first read if you want.
Okay. Is that it?
You want me to keep talking?
Didn't want to cut you off. Moving on, Mr. Bergen.
Well, I thought about ducking like Audrey. I've got four items for you tonight. The first is the library project. Just an update from what's in the packet. We issued Addendum 1 on Monday, which extends the bid period from May 10th to May 22nd. Our intention there is to provide prospective bidders with a little more opportunity to gather their subs and come to the party. So, we are having a pre-bid meeting tomorrow. You probably noticed the power lines are all relocated and the gas company's been working starting, I think, Monday for a week to two weeks to relocate the gas line. So, everything is going well there. I did talk to, contact in the legislature on my way to the meeting tonight and the word about the hill is that they're going to be out, out of there on time this year. So, Monday, we were hearing, not likely, maybe a couple-week bonus session. Sounds like they're actively engaged in final bargaining and so I'm thinking there's a good chance we'll know what's in the capital budget Sunday, probably at the last minute. So, stay tuned for that. My next three items are, oh, I'm back on the library. If anybody's interested in participating in the pre-bid, you're welcome to join us tomorrow morning at 10:00. My next three items, I'm actually requesting action from you tonight, the first of which is a proposed MOU with AFSMI, which I discussed with you prior to the meeting. And I'm looking for a motion to authorize the MOU with AFSMI.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept the MOU with AFSMI. Second?
So, I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And for the public's benefit, obviously, that was a rather circumspect sounding briefing and motion. Once this has been signed, it'll be located on our website with the rest of our MOUs. The next item I alluded to at the last meeting, I told you I was very excited about a prospective business coming to Cedar Woolley. And the business I was speaking of is Eddie Line. So, Eddie Line is a kayak manufacturer that was formed in 1971 and has grown considerably over the years and is outgrowing their home at the Port of Skagit. So, they have entered into an agreement to purchase some real estate in Cedar Woolley and are now in the process of kind of building that project forward. The city met today with their general contractor, their design engineers, and their architect and their lawyer to talk about our design process and move the project forward. One element of this project, though, is a request to apply for a Skagit County Economic Development Grant, the so-called .09 funds, for half a million dollars to support the infrastructure that would serve this project. So, the site in particular is the rumor property, the 21 acres behind Les Schwab. And I think everybody here, none of you were here when this happened, but all of you are probably well aware that it was always our intention that... The next item I alluded to at the last meeting, I told you I was very excited about a prospective business coming to Cedar Woolley. And the business I was speaking of is Eddie Line. So Eddie Line is a kayak manufacturer that was formed in 1971 and has grown considerably over the years and is outgrowing their home at the Port of Skagit. So they have entered into an agreement to purchase some real estate in Cedar Woolley and are now in the process of kind of building that project forward. The city met today with their general contractor, their design engineers, and their architect, and their lawyer to talk about our design process and move the project forward. One element of this project, though, is a request to apply for a Skagit County Economic Development Grant, the so-called .09 funds, for half a million dollars to support the infrastructure that would serve this project. So the site in particular is the rumor property, the 21 acres behind Les Schwab. And I think everybody here, none of you were here when this happened, but all of you are probably well aware that it was always our intention that Patrick Road connect SR20 to Jones Road. So there are multiple elements of this project that qualify for .09 funding, Patrick Road being one of them, sewer extensions from the south or from the north being another. And what I'm looking for tonight is a really short timeline here. We had, we, from a staff standpoint, any other great ideas we had for grant funding are distant seconds to this one. This fund was created to give back nine-tenths of a percent of state sales tax money to timber distressed communities such as Skagit County for the explicit purpose of creating or retaining jobs. So as Eddie Line looked to grow their business and build a 30,000 to 45,000 square foot building, as well as co-locate similar outdoor recreational equipment manufacturers in our community, this is exactly what that is all about. So our grant deadline application-wise is May 10. I'd like to get your authorization to apply for that grant to support the Patrick Road and/or our associated sewer utility work tonight, so we can get that out into the county.
I would like to move that we move forward on this grant opportunity.
Second?
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Den Lee, seconded by Councilman DeYoung, to apply for the grant. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Like I said, it's, I'm not sure I've had as much fun as, you know, working with this group. And in the coming weeks, the full vision will unfold, and you'll get to see more. But, you know, the ultimate vision, just to give you kind of the sample of this, is multiple companies, like-minded, employing hundreds of people at that site with integrated trail system within the property to support both those connecting SR20 to Jones Road in our community, as well as their own employees who like that sort of activity. And they want to handle stormwater with a wet pond where you could also take a test ride. So, you know, just some really cool features and some, you know, integrated services for those who work there, you know, all of that. So like I say, it's just really, really, very exciting. All right, so my last item for you is, in the process of interviewing employees, prospective candidates for Joanne's replacement, we ran across somebody who has graduated from Western Washington University with a planning degree, and just seemed super sharp, and somebody who has not yet got her toe in the water of planning. And so we'd like to create a paid internship and offer this person the opportunity to come to work for Cedar Woolley as an intern for a few months. The 2019 budget includes an assistant planner that was funded. So what we're asking for from you tonight is, we have not yet pulled the trigger on hiring an assistant planner, and we're not ready to do that yet, but we would like to use some of the funds that were designated for that, I would say approximately $7,500, to hire this person, offer this person an opportunity to be our planning intern. That would give John the ability to pass off some planning-level projects and get some help over the next few months, and it would give her an opportunity to see what it's really like. And then at the end of that time period, we believe we'll be ready to have a conversation about actually pushing the button on the assistant planner position. So we've got the funds in the budget, but the budget didn't specifically contemplate this use, which is why I'm looking for, you know, a motion to authorize, you know, the creation of a part-time paid internship in the Planning Department.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of this person as a paid intern for the summer months.
Second?
At the amount that you had indicated.
Gotcha. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. We'll have one other intern coming this summer. This is an unpaid summer internship. We'll have a fellow from Indiana here for the month of July. He's an MPA student and chose Cedar Woolley. Lives in Stanwood, I think, or that's where he's originally from, and he looked around, he's working in, I think, Bloomington. The middle of the country is just not my forte in terms of that whole geographic.
Flyover territory?
Yeah, precisely.
Has he been checked out by Freiberger? Because that's where he's from.
Different school, but yes. We connected the dots. So Tucker's his name, and he's been working in a larger city, but he's slotted into a role in a big city where he does, my sense is, sort of a similar task day after day. He looked around, contacted me, oh, I don't know, maybe six, eight months ago, came and met with the mayor and I. So he's only got a month to work with us, but we intend to bring him to city council, and the hope is that we have some, some sort of a project, a meaningful task that he can do for us that culminates in some sort of interaction with council. We'll also have him, and I was thinking about what he's really trying to achieve. Well, he wants to see what a real city works, you know, a city of our size actually does. So we'll put in the effort to get him out on ride-alongs with law and fire and paramedics and spend a day with the mayor, going off to do all the mayor stuff, and, you know, so, you know, look for Tucker in July, and that one's a freebie. I think we cover our interns normally like that with just L and I coverage, so that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayorman?
I've got a few things as well to go over tonight. The first is our first quarter financial report. I did email those out. It's posted on the website, and I gave you a copy on the dais as well. I won't go through that whole report. With the first quarter, we don't have a lot of information yet to really establish trends for the year, but I'll touch really quickly on some of the highlights of what I see in the report. Primarily, we look at the general fund due to the fluctuations in taxes and things on there. On page seven of your report, you'll see the general fund revenues summary graphs, and this is all of the different ones put together. You'll see right now, we have, so far year-to-date, just under $1.8 million has come in. Normally, we would expect around 1.6. So we're a little bit ahead of where we should normally be at the end of the first quarter. Puts us about 23% of what we expect to receive for the year. Now, in March, you may be thinking, we're 25% of the way through the year. Shouldn't revenues be a little greater than that? But if you remember, our revenues don't come in evenly over the year. They come in a lot of times in May and November. So you'll see those percentages shift around a little bit, but the key thing is, we're tracking a little bit ahead of schedule. On the other side of that, if you go to page 11 on your reports, you'll see a similar graph. This is for our general fund expenditures. And on general fund expenditures, we're also a little bit ahead of where we would normally be right now, about 7% at the end of the quarter. And we have a couple of different items I'll talk about in just a second that do that. It's nothing concerning, it's just all tiny.
No removal?
Yeah. So we're looking pretty good. We're at just about 23% of our budget for the year. That's not bad, being one quarter of the way through the year. So really, on the revenue side, what it comes down to is, sales taxes and transport fees are ahead right now. Sales taxes, this year so far, we've collected $387,000. Last year, or excuse me, we've collected $402,000. Last year, we collected about $387,000. So we're about 3.8% ahead of last year. So that's a good sign there. Again, I always want to caution a little bit on that, because we want to make sure we know how much of that is one-time money. So if we have a construction project, they may pay sales tax on that, but once the project's done, that little piece goes away. So we are working through a process right now with the state. Actually, this week, I've been working with them. We will get our sales tax information split between construction and other sectors as well. We'll have better information on how to track that. The other area that revenues are up are fire transport revenues. In 2018, we were just a little over $45,000 for the year. This year, we're at $132,000. And that reflects, you heard a little earlier from the fire department, our increased transport load that we're doing. The one caution to remember, though, it's not all clear money, because we are also paying additional people to cover those loads. So a little bit later, as we get probably through April and into May, I'm going to be doing what's called a pro forma analysis. I'm going to pull out just this new EMS function, and so we can look at the cost of that, and then what the related revenues are, and we can track and see how that program is working out for us. When we took that over from CDAA and Central Valley Ambulance Authority and the county, a lot of that is conjecture. You know, we had really good, solid estimates and that, but I really want to track and make sure that we're following along well on that. On the expenditure side, good news also can cause a little extra expense. We participate in a Medicaid reimbursement program for our transports. It's called ground emergency medical transport, or you'll hear us say GEMT. And what we get is an additional subsidy from the government if we have Medicaid-type transports. So we were able to join up in that program. It was a little bit of a guess how much we would get. We're actually coming in ahead as well because of the number of transports going up. We have a string attached to that revenue source. Last year, we purchased a property across the street on Murdoch here, and the source of funds to pay for that was the anticipated GEMT money coming in. We had kind of guessed it might take a couple of years to pay that back. At the rate we're going, we'll be done this year. So what I've been doing is taking that excess GEMT money and applying it against the inter-fund loan purchased, used to purchase that property. We'll pay that off early and save the interest costs on that. So we're getting more money in, but you'll see expenses go up as well as we apply that to pay down the loan on that property. And the final area in expenditures, if you look through the graphs, you'll notice the court, the expenditure line, is a little unusually high. Right now, we have a staff member in the court area who's on medical leave, and we have been hiring some additional people to come in and cover that position. So right now, the compensation in the court department is a little bit higher, and that's the reason why, is we're covering that medical leave. As you go through that report, when you get a chance, you'll notice that all our other operating budgets are tracking right on target with the projections right now. There's really nothing else that's any cause of concern. From a cash flow standpoint, and I don't quite have the page number on this one, we're looking actually quite well. I have a graph up on the screen. You can see there's a red dotted line. That's our expenses so far this year, and typically, that line will move flat right across that graph. The black line is our revenues, and it's the ones a little more squirrely. It'll start out a little high, it'll drop. You'll see it spike back up in April when property taxes come in. It'll drop back down again, and then spike again in November. What you have to be really cognizant of is how long that black line is below the red line, because we're actually spending down reserves a little bit until the next stream of revenue comes in. Right now, these are, you want that gap to be very narrow, and hopefully, that green line that you see, which is the cumulative effect, stays as close to zero as possible. It doesn't go too far underneath it. What that tells me is that our cash reserves are in good shape, and we have enough to cover that period of time when expenditures actually exceed revenues for a couple of months. So that's an important one to watch. I look at this also compared to other years, and you can see, over the last five years, how this graph plays out. It's very consistent as you go over the year where the increases and decreases are. Now, for this year, I've put a red dotted line in there, and you can see, we've actually started in a higher cash position this year than in previous years. That's a good sign. It means our cash reserves are slowly starting to build up a little bit. We had talked about that a few months ago, about establishing a minimum fund balance level that's, you know, certified basically by the Government Finance Officers Association. So I'll be tracking this as we go through the year, and the hope is that we'll see that red dotted line at least be in the upper portion of that graph, and that'll follow with the policy that we're trying to do. Investments, right now, at the end of March, we have about $8.2 million in investments. It's 100% in the local government investment pool with the State Treasurer's Office. That's what we call the LGIP. Currently, it's earning about 2.52%. The graph on the lower side, you can see a blue and a red line. The blue line is the LGIP, and it's doing a good thing. It's going up over time. There were times when that interest rate was down below 1% not too long ago, so it's good to see it actually getting back up into a good earnings area. The red line underneath that is a benchmark of other municipal-type money market accounts. It's called INET or IMoney. You'll see that out there. And what you really want to do is use that as a benchmark. We want to try to be earning above that average if we can. Right now, the LGIP is running above that, and we also have been talking with an investment firm who will, might look at investing in federal agency investments. We have money that we set aside, say, to purchase a new garbage truck in five or seven years. So that money sits there, and we won't be touching it until the time we actually buy it. That's money we can maybe put into an investment for a year or two, and actually maybe earn another half a percent above what we're doing now. And I've looked at that excess funds that we can invest. We could probably pick up another $40,000 a year in interest earnings by doing that. So we have a couple of different options here. Moving off of the financial report, and I wanted to give you a little information on the library project financing. As we've discussed in the past, we have a couple of different ways that we're able to look at this. One is doing a traditional bond issue, which we've done before with the sewage stream and plant, and even with the city hall building here. That was a USDA loan, but very similar. The second way we could do it is, why not be a little creative and see if we could get a little bit of bid pressure going in the market between all the banks? So we drafted an RFP, and we sent that out to 15 different banks. And the hope is, that would drive interest rates down. Today was the cutoff date. I've reviewed about eight to nine of those responses. So far, the traditional bond method was 4%, and that's what we were using in our modeling. The bid pressure we've been getting has pushed that rate down. The banks are all coming in about 3.1% to 3.2%. We have a couple outliers. One was 3.6%. Another one was 2.4%, but they have some strings on that. There's a variable rate portion in the later years, but we're sure going to look at it. But even if we take the average rate, I put a couple of columns in here. One is a bond issue. If we did $5 million at 4%, we pay $367,000 a year as the mortgage payment. If we do the bank placement, one with the RFP at 3.2%, we're paying about $342,000 a year. So if I look at what we pay over that 20-year life, getting that 3.2% rate, if we can lock that in, we're going to save about $511,000 over the 20-year life of that loan. So it was worth putting that RFP out there, and we'll be working with our financial advisory firm and laying them all out side by side, and then coming back to you with probably a selection of one of those to go with. But right now, it's looking like it would be better for the city to go with a single placement bond than doing a traditional bond issue. So that was really, I was really excited about that today. A couple other quick things. You may have heard of Initiative 976. This is Tim Immon and his efforts to roll back car tab fees to $30. This is similar to what we saw 18, 20 years ago. This will be on the November 2019 ballot. And what does this mean? Car tabs are used for a couple of different things. What a lot of cities in their own areas voted for was a transportation benefit district. And it could have been funded one of two ways, or actually a combination. You could fund it with car tab fees. You can fund it with an additional sales tax, or a combination of the two. Cedar Woolley's is funded with car tab fees. So unfortunately, this initiative would actually roll back our transportation benefit district revenue. So we want to just pay attention to this one. I think when we had a councilor treat a year ago, I had a little picture of a woman with her head on the railroad tracks, and the train was coming. These are the kind of things we want to keep an eye on and really follow, because what this would mean to us, we would lose about $200,000 a year in transportation funding. And that's what we've been using for overlays and for these projects that we've been doing around the city. So that's a really important one for us.
One comment I have there, Doug, is that, you know, we do the licensing down at the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to... And I want to point out that when, before Tim Immon started this 20 years ago, we were paying excise tax on our cars. And that was significantly more than the $20 fee that the city adds to our car tabs now. It's, I mean, we were talking hundreds of dollars, and depending on the value of your vehicle, it was even worse. But we found, even in looking at it back when it changed, that it had a really negative impact on our communities because of the loss of the revenues. So, I think that it's just Tim Immon doing the Tim Immon thing, and I don't, I hope people will be a lot more conscious of what this means to the communities at large. I realize that some of the larger cities, I mean, we had some people coming up and trying to pretend that they lived in Skagit County because they didn't want to pay some homeless counties. I think that's where this is being initiated out of, is that where you have the larger tax revenues kind of thing.
General transportation.
The regional transportation things, yeah.
I might make a comment on that. I remember when that happened 18 years ago. And where I was at at the time, we lost about 15% of our general fund revenue through that initiative. Back then, that motor vehicle excise tax would be collected, and it was distributed to states called a sales tax equalization. So, you had money being collected in a transportation methodology, but it was being put into general funds. And so, there was a lot of, hmm, you know, maybe we kind of get it. We understand the connection there. What's a little bit different now is those fees are collected in a transportation area, and they're spent exactly on transportation.
That's true.
So, there's a direct correlation between the type of funding and what it's being spent on. So, you're right. I remember what I used to pay in my car tabs, and it's a whole lot more than $20.00 as it is today. But a lot of the conversation between Tim Immon has been with sound transit. And you have the three larger counties down in that area. The unfortunate part is an initiative to do something in that specific area, an initiative is statewide.
Yeah.
So, one of the unintended consequences sometimes in smaller communities get impacted by that as well, even though they may not be the real focus of that effort. That's just one thing I've seen. But it is something that we'll have to keep an eye on and adjust to depending on the way that election goes. Couple of last quick things. Budget book publication. The documents in final form. We have one item on the council agenda tonight. I'm excitedly waiting to see how that goes, because I'd like to get our goals and objectives put into the budget and have them be the most current ones. And then, we jump into the quick, proof the book, paginate it, and get it printed off this next week or so and try to get it out to everybody. So, it'll be nice to have that one behind us. The very last item, the mayor maybe, I believe, mentioned that we were getting a couple of awards from the Washington Public Treasurers Association. So, I'm doing a somewhat shameless plug on these. We had two that we submitted. One was our debt policy. One was our investment policy. On the investment policy, I went over, for the presentation, we were one of three cities that received this from the Washington Public Treasurers Association. It's a certificate of excellence. On the debt policy, we were the only city in the state to get that. So, that was, that was pretty good. We were happy to get that. You know, it's a little bit more policies sometimes when you actually look at them. It's 25 pages of very mind-numbing information sometimes. But really, what's important to it and why it's good for us to even talk about this is we want our community to know. And it's to know that we're safeguarding our assets, and we're being very prudent in our decision-making regarding debt. The thing that may sound funny coming from me is that holds finance accountable to do things in the right way. So, it's very good for us to do these types of things. And we've talked more about different policies and things, and we'll be bringing those forward as well. But this is good. It sets some good parameters for us, and it's a good thing for the community. That's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you for all your doing. It's phenomenal. Appreciate you. Okay. Councilman Couch?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Owen?
No, I have one thing I wanted to remind Aaron that I got rid of my couch. My yard fixture next door, thanks to the city. I mean, I...
Councilwoman Corneille?
I actually just wanted to ask Aaron about the, I got the email about the swim night.
Yes.
That there were 80, 80 people from Cedar Woolley that participated, which is awesome. And that was just the one time. So, I was wondering what the updates were. I saw that there were going to be some updates on dates, and is it still going to be the third Saturday?
Yeah, and I think it's now going to be the first Saturday from 6:30 to 8:30. So, they're going to have, I think it'll be Cedar Woolley and the Upriver Towns will be on the first Saturday. And I didn't confirm this, but I believe Burlington and La Conner then would be the third Saturday. So, definitely a good turnout from the community there that night.
Amazing.
I talked to Senator Wagner this weekend, and he was interested to find out how that went. And specifically, would love to see some sort of bus service for swim night. And also, his comment was, you know, we did this to save a life. That was the goal. And so, I'd love to see some education as part of the swim night, some basic water safety. So, the mayor and I are in contact with the Y, and we'll keep chatting with them. And, you know, SCAT's been difficult, to my experience, to get to do sort of special services like that. But that's a conversation probably worth having, if there's some way we can just get that connection made. I know the mayor of Hamilton was trying to figure out if she could get a bus put together to go from Hamilton to the Y as well. So, a lot of interest.
All right. And another thing, too, is I also, a couple of days ago, went on a car ride with our code enforcement officer, Laura Carr. And I learned a lot. It didn't, it didn't seem like I should have, because we didn't really have a lot, a lot going on. But one thing that did happen is there was a lot of, she, she made sure she let me know that sometimes her job is dangerous. And, you know, of course, it could be, because she's confronting people about issues they don't really want to take care of. And then, we actually did have something that was a little questionable, and I could see where she kind of relies a lot on our police department and vice versa. And so, I kind of saw how the two of them go hand in hand. And another thing is, I didn't know she had such a cool truck. I really am jealous of the hydraulic in the back that I can use. I put my back out two, two or three weeks ago trying to lift a dog, and I really love that hydraulic system she's got back there for lifting dogs and getting dogs. And she explained, like, how they would be right in her face if she had to get up there, and if they're dangerous dogs, and she didn't want to do that. But, um, yeah, so anyway, it was just a couple hours, but it was pretty, it was pretty good. I would encourage that.
Now, when we specked that truck, you know, a few of us had our heads scratching about this Tommy lift, like, really? But as you well know, you know, you put a dog in a crate, and you try to lever a crate over, that can be problematic with the moving animal and then the proximity, too. So, yeah, that truck, you know, was just purchased last year, and that was purchased using code enforcement fine money. So, for those folks in the community who just decide they don't want to do the job that they're going to do eventually, they also pay a fine as part of that process, and that's what bought that truck.
She's so, she's so tiny for, just watching her get out, and then you don't see her anymore.
When the truck was delivered, she went out to it and looked at it and put her foot up in the truck. She had it over at Homer's that afternoon to get the truck step installed. We thought it would be the same as the chief's truck, but it's just a newer model here, and Ford bumped it up a few inches. Yeah. No, I echo that. I encourage everybody to go along for a ride with Officer Carr. You know, her job is vitally important to the quality of life work that we do. She is often the only contact for folks with the police department and definitely relies on patrol to back her up when she gets into any situation where that makes sense. She also has tools that patrol doesn't have. You know, there are plenty of examples that we can give of full-blown neighborhood nuisance drug houses that are just creating all sorts of hate and discontent. And we got them because their broken window, or their junk car, or their dilapidated fence, you know? And that's what ultimately got us to resolve that problem when the reason we started going there was, you know, they were stealing everybody's, you know, stealing from everybody's cars in the neighborhood to fund their, their drug dealing. So, vitally important. If it was up to me, I would have an additional code enforcement officer right now, today, working in Cedar Woolley.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Kinser? Councilman DeYoung?
Boy, did we have a great time on Saturday with the Easter egg hunt at Riverfront Park. And I wanted to thank the Wildcat Steelhead Club for continuing to do that. Just a bunch of great folks that are giving back to the community. We estimated about 250 kids, and then, of course, the additional adults with that. It took three hours to set up. It took about three minutes to clean up. So, it was, it was a lot of fun, a lot of videos taken, a lot of great memories taken as well. Also, it's, you know, springtime, so it's pothole season, and we got some creeping up. So, I've been getting contacted by some neighbors on their special pothole. And I would, I think I'm going to be communicating with our Public Works Department about that, and so they can set a priority work list. So, thank, and a lot of talking about meetings with people about fish and salmon restoration and water quality. And what a great opportunity we have here in the city of Cedar Woolley to be part of something that can help make a better, better place.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman DeYoung, or Dunley?
It's kind of happening with the meeting, right? Oh, yeah. Okay, so, 810 Cook Road B is still active where it shouldn't be. And I was walking my dogs, and I saw a bug I'd never seen before, which got me doing a lot of research in, in Washington bugs. So, it was kind of interesting.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kelly?
Just to mention for Woodfest this weekend, we have events going on in conjunction with the Tulip Festival. But they are at the high school on Saturday and Sunday. They're out at Perkins Farms and at Whittlebrook Manor. And the Downtown Association is adding two events, one Friday night, which you have to have reservations for, and you have to buy your tickets online for the freak show at Iron Mountain Grill. The monies go to benefit the Downtown Association. The other event is the Bellingham Circus Guild will be doing a sideshow throughout town. We have a full gym for the Woodfest itself. There's plenty of vendors, plenty of, we have eight schools participating this year, which is amazing. And the Pine, the Pinewood Derby, regional competition is there. And so, we are expecting 100 young scouts to be there for that competition along with their families, which can be another couple hundred people as well. So, that is going to boost our interest numbers there, give us a little bit more activity at the actual event. And we do hope you all will come out and support the Woodfest. And then, the following weekend, we do have our fishing derby up at the Swift Center. And that isn't put on by the Chamber, but it by the...
Steelhead.
Steelhead Club, too. And that's another great youth activity.
Cedar Woolley would be involved with that this time, because we do own the park there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, I have no comments tonight, so I will open up the floor for public comment. It is 8:05. I ask if you come forward, that you, if you would give your name and address and keep it to three minutes. So, is there anyone for public comment? I will close it at 8:05. So, now, we are moving on to unfinished business, and the Home Trust of Skagit Community Development Block grant, there we are. We've arrived, 45 minutes later. So, Aaron?
See, the mayor was trying to help you out. You could be home having dinner by now. So, sorry. But we're here with you. So, this comes back to you at the council's request. So, you had a first reading at the last meeting. Council had a few questions. So, in the packet is a memo from Home Trust answering those questions. The only information that wasn't available when we put this in the packet was that Doug was still communicating with some of his counterparts and with Paul a little bit about understanding the staff time piece. So, I'll turn it over to Doug to kind of answer that. One other question from the council, which was, how much staff time will it take for the city to partner and do this grant with Home Trust?
Hey, looking at the grant itself and talking with Paul a little bit about what is involved in that, the primary things that I would want to consider is, one, this is federal funding, which when you get to certain thresholds, there are time requirements that come with that. You'll notice we talk in the grant in terms of around $750,000. That's the threshold line where when the city gets audited on its grants each year, if your federal money is under that number, you have your standard audit. If you have federal money that goes over that, you get what's called a single audit. And so, that's an additional, maybe about a week of audit time, which could cost you a few thousand dollars. But I think in looking at this program and that, we would be under that threshold. So, that would reduce that amount of staff time and the cost of doing that. With the group doing the application themselves and filing that, and staff not doing that, that also limits the number of hours down. So, I'm, it's a little bit of throwing a dart on where that would land and what conversations there would be on that. But I'm thinking probably 20 to 25 hours would get us through the whole process and our audit time spent with the auditors talking about that, that specific grant. I did talk with John Coleman a little bit about planning, but that's really a whole different thing. That would be like any other development or anything else coming in. That's not really something that we would say is an additional cost to that. But as far as finance and our involvement with that, I think 20, 25 hours would more than cover that.
So, are there any questions from the council? All right. So, they are asking for a decision tonight. This is time-sensitive. There does have to be a public meeting if it passes tonight, so, a public hearing. So, do I have a motion?
I would move that we authorize the CDBG grant application to support Home Trust of Skagit's proposed Cedar Woolley project and schedule a public meeting.
Second.
Okay. Second.
All right. So, I have a motion by Councilwoman Dunley, seconded by Councilwoman Corneille. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. So, moving on to the ordinance, 1923-19, the Library Limited General Obligation Bond. This is the second reading, and this would be, Aaron?
Well, now that Doug's here, I'm going to be happy to pass off this, what did you call those policies, lengthy tones?
Mind-numbing.
Oh, mind, this would be a mind-numbing ordinance.
Yeah.
I'd have to agree with them on that one. Ordinance 1923-19 is a bond ordinance, and we call it a limited tax general obligation bond, or you hear it called LTGO. You have lots of acronyms. What this ordinance does, prior to going out and doing a bond issue of a municipal bond, we have to pass an ordinance that sets the terms and conditions for that bond, in this case, for financing the library construction project. This ordinance is a little non-traditional. It's because we were taking a non-traditional approach to getting funding. We talked about the two different ways, a traditional bond issue or direct... funding. We talked about the two different ways, a traditional bond issue or direct purchase. So, when we were working with our bond attorneys down in Seattle, I asked them, please write it so it will cover both alternatives, and they did. So, as you look through there, you'll see sections where they speak about underwritten bonds. That's your traditional bond. And then, a direct purchase bond, that's a bond sold to one bondholder, and I put "bank" in there. So, the RFP that we did in that, that would be a direct purchase. So, the terms that are outlined in the bond ordinance, right now, it's not to exceed $5,150,000. That additional $150,000 is an estimated 3% for closing costs. So, that's why you see that number. When we've been talking about $5 million, usually is the face amount of the debt. The term or maturity of those bonds would be 20 years, and the interest rate you determine at closing. Now, we have two options. One, if we do a traditional bond issue, there are a lot more hoops to go through, and we would not be able to probably close on the bonds till July. With a direct placement, you can skip some of those things, and you actually might be able to close the bond sometime during the month of May. So, we've written that in there in book. You'll see paragraphs addressing both closing dates, and that's what's on our closing schedule right now. The other thing that you should know in here is it sets a designated representative, and the wording in there right now, it's the city supervisor and the finance director. And what that's all about is, we will come down to the date of closing, when we're out on the market, everybody's moving really fast to get the bond sold. We'll get offers coming in to close, and what we need to do is be sitting at, by our phones that day, so you know where Erin and I will be. And that is, this sets up designating the two of us to go ahead and execute that sale contract at the time the market is closing. What that would do, it approves the rates and the maturity dates as well. That's what we'd be saying, that if they come in and say, okay, it's 3.2%, we'd say, okay, that's about the extent of it, and then they go ahead and sell. So, I just wanted you to know that there is a designation that assigns that duty to someone in the city. The other things that it does, this is going to be a tax-exempt bond. So, you hear about municipal bonds being tax-exempt. So, what you want to do is make sure the city does not do things in the future that may violate that. So, if we issue this for a governmental purpose, then say, someday we say, no, we want to sell the building to Leschwa or to someone else. That's a private business. The debt that's on there is now considered no longer tax-exempt. So, there are different things in there that we are saying we will do in this ordinance to make sure we don't violate anything that makes it lose its tax-exempt status. So, it's just the attorneys take 25 pages and a lot of information to say that. But that's essentially what...
Mind-numbing, mind-numbing information.
So, that, that's really, in a sense, what this is. We have to have this passed before we actually go to market on this. So, the recommended action tonight is a motion to adopt ordinance 1923-19.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1923-19.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser, to adopt ordinance 1923, the Limited Government Obligation Bond. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to take this time of personal privilege. I do support this whole heartily, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Merriman for all of the hard work and being creative and looking at all those ways to stretch our dollar, use the market to be competitive for the benefit of the citizens of Cedar Woolley. Thank you very much.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the salary increase for the city council members. This is the second reading, and this will be ordinance 1924-19. Erin?
Yes, this is back on your agenda tonight after being tabled at the last meeting, because we didn't have a full council here. So, the proposal would increase council members' compensation from $500 a month to $900 a month. Under the Constitution, it takes intervening elections before that becomes effective. So, you can see in the memo, the cumulative cost during implementation, we'd have one council member who would receive this new pay in 2019 for one month, and then, four council members in the following, well, three more the following year, and then, finally, the full council the year after. So, just looking forward, the total cost of this proposal is about $36,222, $220.80 a year beginning in 2022, when all seven council members would be paid equally. In the time between now and then, we would have various council members at various stages of pay. I don't have any, anything else to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I actually had a comment, though.
Okay.
I was, when I'm looking at the other cities and their compensation, it looks like we're already about right where they are for our size. So, I was wondering, I'm thinking 900 is a bit much of an increase, personally. If it's not the same, and we are going to go with an increase, does it have to be that much?
The increase is entirely up to the city council, so you're, you're free to increase or decrease the salary, with understanding that an intervening election is required before it becomes effective. And it's entirely a council policy question as to what the pay would be.
Councilman Couch?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but because my comments were, you know, they were in the paper, and I've, I think I've spoke about it, but I don't want anybody on council to take this personally. But I think if you move this along any further, vote for it, you should be, one, ashamed of yourself, because we have staff and departments that are not properly funded and not properly staffed. And if we increase our own wages by 80% before we take care of our own staff, I think you should consider what kind of message that sends to our staff.
I agree with that.
Any more comments?
Well, Jared, I, I appreciate what you have to say. However, I don't think that anyone here on the council should feel ashamed of themselves.
I guess it's a difference of opinions, then, because I, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I understand.
I think we need to take care of our staff.
I'm, we have done a lot to take care of our staff, and we certainly are doing more. We're looking at various ways to make sure those things are taken care of, and the amount over the course of the period that we're talking about through 2022 was just a total of $36,000 total over that whole period of five years, or four years.
Just to clarify, the $36,000 was just the calendar year 2022 from, for, for the three years and one month, it would be $67,698.
Okay, thank you. But, but I think it's, you know, one thing to put forth your opinion, and yet, to shame someone else is not really, in my opinion, a proper way to go about it. The other thing that I, I don't know, you know, I looked at those numbers, too, and I think Jermaine does have a point. However, I would like to move this along. I don't think we need to keep beating on it. So, Chuck is the one who put out the first request, and I think it would be up to him to determine whether or not we want to reduce that amount or not.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1924-19 to adjusting council's monthly pay.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Owens, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser, to, for the salary increase for the city council, ordinance 1924-19. Any more questions?
Question?
Yes?
I would like somebody to provide me some justification why we think an 80% pay increase is reasonable. And how would we feel if we were sitting at the bargaining table as a city with one of our collective bargaining units, and they walked in the room and said, we want an 80% pay increase? I've been in those negotiations, and you'd get laughed out of the room. So, if you're going to do this, I think we need to sharpen our pencil a little bit. Because 80% sure seems like a lot.
We made a motion, and you should vote.
Anybody want to answer my question, why we think 80% is appropriate?
I don't think that we want to. I think we want to vote.
Okay, I guess we'll leave it up to the voters when people are up for reelection.
Yep.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, we have two not for the vote, and that would be Councilwoman Carnegie and Councilman Couch for the record. Okay, so, motion passes. And then, moving on to the city council work plan and goals. This is the second reading. Erin, do you want to cover this?
Yes. We keep working this thing to try to get it in a form and format that seems to be what we're looking for, and I think we made a bunch of progress with this most recent version. So, the message that I got from both the retreat and also the council's study session was, let's have fewer goals, and let's identify specifically how we're going to achieve those goals with kind of the "how." So, what are we trying to do, and how are we going to do it? So, this draft is not written to come up with anything new. It's written to capture what you've already talked about, what was in the prior version, but reformatted, and what's in the 2019 budget, recognizing that, you know, if we got that right, this should be ready for adoption. And if you like the look and feel, then this would be the format that we would use working on the 2020 budget later this summer. So, this would be totally updated for the 2020 budget. So, but this is, again, it's really whatever you'd like to have. So, we can add goals, we can take away goals, we can add action steps, we can take away action steps. So, whatever the council's pleasure is.
Counsel?
The way it looked, I really did. I think that it, it took a nice form.
So, you're pleased with it, counsel?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm pleased with it, too. I really appreciate having the goals and the action steps outlined.
Okay. So, are there any changes, or...
Just another comment, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
Again, just echoing everyone else. I really like the new format, and it's easy to read, easy to understand, and it's, to me, an improvement of professionalism of what we're doing. So, thank you very much for the effort you put into it. I shamelessly stole it from a sister city, but the words are our own.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure here? Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the goals and objectives that are set forth in our, for the city council.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Dunley to adopt...
No, no, it was by Kelly.
Oh, sorry, by Kelly.
Seconded by...
To adopt the updated 2019 city council work plan and goals, seconded by Councilwoman Dunley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And moving on to new business, the candidate forum. So, page 79 on your packet.
So, I thought I'd bring this to you before some of you become candidates here in the next couple of weeks. The League of Women Voters, for many, many years, provided a neutral candidate forum in Cedar Woolley. It seems like it's been five or six years ago when the League said, we just don't have enough people, time, energy, or whatever, to make that happen. The city stepped in and started sponsoring Candidate Forum in 2014, and we've done quite a few since then. We've had pretty good success. I know a number of you have, maybe all of you have been to our events. We run them a little differently than the League. We follow a different set of rules, but they're PDC compliant, and we generally mail invitations to all of our utility customers, which is how we make sure all the, all the chairs are filled in the rooms. So, I guess I'd like to continue with the process, and depending on how many filings we get, potentially, we'd have a primary forum, and then, for sure, we'd have a general election forum. And with your approval, we'll, we'll just move forward the way we've done that in the past.
Would you only do the primary if there were more than...
We'd only do the primary if there's actually a primary election. So, it would require more than two candidates to trigger that election. Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question. So, this, for clarification, isn't just limited to city of Cedar Woolley races. I believe I saw it'd be more of a space for the, for the League to conduct whatever they thought the candidates of interest were going to be? No, not, not the League. This is a city-sponsored forum, so city-direct, and... Asking questions to understand? Yeah, yeah, no, exactly. And we generally invite whoever's on our ballot. So, in this particular election cycle, that would be city council, mayor, school board, hospital district, or, I don't think they're up. I think it's just those three that we'll likely see on our ballot. We also have the potential, depending on the city council's future action, to have a pro-con on a potential ballot question to the voters. So, to follow up on that, my sense would be, do you have, let me rephrase, do you have a sense of when you're thinking of making the primary forum? Yeah, so, we'll know probably by May 17th if we're going to have a primary election. And then, depending, you know, the challenge with that is, if there's only one seat where there's a primary election, it's pretty tough to get excited about running a full event. You know, they're quite a bit of work, really. But if there's at least a couple seats, then that would get us, you know, a minimum of six candidates on the day. My concern that the forum would be after the filing deadline, and that is what you expressed. So, that sounds great. Thank you. Oh, yeah, for sure. So, we like to run the forum approximately a month. So, I've always tried to schedule them right about the week before the ballot's dropping. So, that way, you know, it's kind of, the, the election campaigns have fully matured, and people haven't yet had a chance to vote. So, this is your time to come in and, you know, meet candidates in person in our city to ask questions. And our format has always been, you know, note cards from audience members read by the, by the moderator, and we've had, like I said, pretty good success, and candidates in the past have been pretty complimentary about how we've run the events. In fact, candidate Janiki must have been now about five years ago. I think I was moderating that year. I made a comment about how we, we all like blue sky and fresh air. So, if you give us a fluffy answer that didn't really ask, answer the question, we'll, we'll add 30 seconds and tell you you didn't answer and give you another shot. She had a good, she had a good chuckle. Normally, you don't get that at a forum. So, we didn't use that, though, that year. Should have, would have been fun. So, anyway, whatever you'd like to do, I'd like to, I'd like to offer that service to the community, if the council would like to sponsor it.
So, looking for a motion to proceed?
I'm here. I'm here.
Proceed with this year's candidate.
Second. Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, and seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie, with a motion to proceed with the candidate forum. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And that wraps it about up, unless there's anything for the good of the order?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it earlier. Just a misspelled. I could have probably just called you, but on page 44, just at the bottom, where it says recommendations for the ordinance, it's misspelling on there. Just, I don't know, I'm telling you.
Oh, yeah, we got a typo on page 44.
Yeah, sorry, a typo. That's the official word.
All right.
Okay, with no objections, we are adjourned.